Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the August 27, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I think I said order twice, but so we're in order if nothing else.
That was a good order.
We've got no minutes, but we will soon, right? We will? Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move. We're going to go a little bit out of order from the agenda and take item four, which is the dredging addendum three to the engineering contract. Harbor Master Corson, take us through this, it'd be great. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
I feel like this dredging operation is the gift that keeps on giving. A lot of moving parts.
Yes, and it's moving along very quickly, too.
Thank you for staying on top of all of them.
No problem. So, we already have FOTH engineering under contract. They've been doing all the engineering to get us permitted and through the bidding process. We're wrapping up with the permits in the bidding process, and this addendum will take us through the construction phases. It'll include pre-construction coordination with contractor submissions, technical assistance, water quality monitoring, reporting, and post-construction notifications. So what does all that mean? I kind of sum it up initially before we start dredging. They'll do new depth soundings so we know what the depths are in the harbor, and then at the very end of the project, they will do depth soundings to determine how much material we've removed. During the entire dredging project, they'll be monitoring the water quality of the harbor to determine how much silt gets stirred up and whether we need to use other methods to try to reduce the amount of silt that's getting stirred up. And they'll also address issues that the contractor may have regarding technical stuff. So, it's pretty standard to have an engineer onboard while you're dredging, and that's what this addendum will allow us to do. I believe it's also something that we can get reimbursed for 50 percent of through the matching funds of the state.
Stay current. Okay. Thank you. Joe, any questions?
I do. Thank you for this. This is very helpful. The addendum assumes, I'm looking at 1B, it's assuming for budgeting purposes that the dredging will take no more than 16 weeks to complete. Is that a likely scenario?
So, that's all we have for our dredging window. We can start October 1, and we have to be done by January 31. Sometimes it's possible to get a two-week extension into February, but that's the maximum amount of time we'll actually have to do the dredging.
Okay. And the dollar amount here, which is a lump sum of $89,085.40, is that consistent with our overall budget for this project?
Yes.
And when would this amount be paid?
So, it'll be paid as they meet certain milestones. So, what they'll do is they'll report to us every so often, we've achieved this goal, this milestone, they submit an invoice for what they've done, and then that will get processed for payment. So, we won't just cut a check for the entire thing. It's something that'll get paid as we go along.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And that's what we've done for the engineering services so far, as they meet certain milestones, then we make payments.
That's all I have.
Mary? No questions.
One just further quick question, and that is the six onsite meetings with the contractor and the town, is that standard? Can you feel comfortable that that's sufficient interaction for the engineering folks to monitor this sufficiently?
I do feel that that's sufficient, and if we need to, we can work in some more, I'm sure.
Okay.
But I think that should be sufficient.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Any questions for the public on the addendum to the dredging contract?
I guess if you think about it, it's about two meetings a month, so...
Yep.
That should be fine.
I mean, I guess the one concern would be if we run into any sort of an issue and there needs to be a little more time spent in terms of solving it, I think we'd want engineering expertise to be working with us on our behalf with the contractor to make sure it's solved appropriately. So, you know, given your level of diligence on all this, I'm not worried about it, but to be honest with you, that's the sort of item that I pick out of almost all the contracts because I think, given the process that we typically run through here in town, you know, we're a pretty intensive organization, so, you know, I just want to make sure that the folks that we've hired to, you know, look out for our best interests will be onsite and be available to us when we need them. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I guess I want to just point out briefly about addendums. We're on addendum three. The last time we dredged, I didn't get a chance to check before I came, but I think we had six or seven, maybe eight addendum. So, it's standard to see changes as we move through the process. So, if we find that we don't have enough meetings or we need something more, then you would see me coming back here with addendum, whatever it is. Try to keep these to a minimum, but I anticipate that we're going to see several more of these. One thing we will also do, that we'll be looking at the regulations, too, for the inner harbor, the placement of the vessels before they go back in. So, if we make any changes to these and there's additional funding we have to spend, you'll see me back for more addendums. So, I will keep coming back with these. We're not done, and it's routine, it's standard, it's the way we did it last time, it worked out well. So, I don't want you to be concerned when you see addendums. It's routine, for us anyways, with our project.
I appreciate that context. Would someone like to make a motion?
Before we do, I just want to make sure, my understanding is that the plural of addendum would be addenda.
Addenda.
Yeah.
[laughing]
And we're going to be using that term, I guess, for this contract.
We can.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign addendum three to the agreement for services for FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we could move to the special harbor regulation. I will say at the outset that I had a couple of technical questions, so what I was wondering if we could do this evening is ask Ken to speak to the merits of the special regulation and hold our vote until September 10, when we can, which is our next meeting, when we could just get a response to the technical questions that I had. So, Ken, if you could take us through the special regulation, that'd be great.
Sure. So, what the special regulation does is it's a tool to help ensure that the mooring field is empty of boats come October 1. That's the first date when the contractor can actually be in the harbor and commence dredging, and it's really important that we have this harbor clear of all moorings, boats, and any other objects so that they can arrive and commence dredging on that day. Whether they actually are here on October 1, I don't know. We haven't got that far. They could be here on October 1, they could be here mid-October or towards the end of October. Hopefully, they'll be here on October 1 because it does take the entire dredging window to dredge the whole harbor. So, what this is, and this was done last time we dredged, in a very similar fashion. The only thing I've changed really is the rate and how the rates applied. Last time, it was initially $100, and then a couple of days later, it went up to $250. So, rather than having the change, I just asked for a $250 fine per day and immediate removal of the vessel or object or mooring in the harbor on or after October 1.
And you and I talked a little bit about the notification process so that the public understands the rationale for the required removal and is, you know, sort of fully briefed on the timing and can make plans. You know, I think Mary knows better than all of us that there are, you know, because this is a boating community, there's going to be a lot of people that need to do, you know, do the same thing, get a mooring and a boat out of the harbor, all in the same period of time. So, I think advanced planning is going to be pretty key to this being successful.
Yes, I'm sending communications to all the boaters in the inner harbor, as well as the marina owners, including the anchor, other news agencies, so that we can ensure that they're getting these communications. I've done one communication so far. There'll be another one very soon. As we achieve different milestones in the process, I update the boaters. The marinas also are asking their, or at least one marina that manages most of the moorings, is asking all the mooring people to be off their boats by a certain day, so he has time to pull them all.
Oh, right, right.
Because if everyone waited till October, or the last day of September, he wouldn't have time to actually remove all those mushrooms. So, the boaters are going to find that even though October 1 is the deadline, they're going to find themselves having to move their, start moving the boats out by mid-September so that we can get all the mushrooms out. With the goal of the contractor being here on October 1, and whether they actually show up on that date or not is out of my control, but it's really important that we have this available for them so that we're meeting our obligations.
Right, right. Joe?
If you wind up removing a vessel, where will you store it?
That's a good question. I guess it depends on the type of the vessel. Most likely, it would probably be something that would be hauled at a kingdom shipyard, stored on the hard. We talk about the fine, and we talk about removing vessels. The last time we did this, I don't think one fine was issued, and I'm pretty sure no vessels were moved by the town. So, I anticipate that that would be the way this would go forward with this dredging operation. I don't anticipate we'll have to do that, but if we're in a situation where we have to, that would be our last resort.
And does the vessel owner pay for the removal and storage costs?
Yeah, so the vessel owner would pay for those. That's correct.
Okay. I mean, this is very much like get your car off the road if it needs to be plowed, and so I think people in Hingham will hear the message, and we will all be the beneficiaries, so...
Yeah, it's a little bit of inconvenience this fall, but the benefits next summer will be well worth it.
Yep. Thank you.
Mary? Ken, I would just note that Ms. McKeever from the Hingham Journalists is in the audience, so maybe the Hingham Journal can also help us in getting the word out...
Absolutely.
...about this project and those dates. I'm imagining that because you've done such a good job with the online mooring permits and the stickers and things like that, that we have current information about boats that are moored in the harbor, so we should be able to reach out to the boat owners and they should get something pretty quickly?
Yes. Yep, they should have all received something by now, and my lack of mentioning anyone here didn't mean I wasn't willing to include them. We're going to also put this on the town website...
Great.
...use the HPD notification process. So, there's a lot of different things we're going to employ to really get the message out, so if they don't see the re-mail, hopefully, they'll see it somewhere else.
And will the docks have to get removed by October 1 as well?
That's correct. So, the town pier floats will be pulled, I believe it's by September 27, they'll be taken out, and that's because we have to time the tides with the ability to remove them.
Right. And then that actually just leads to my final question, which is, I know for Hingham Maritime that when they pull their floats again, that that is dependent on tide, and that they also, my understanding is that they sometimes have volunteers who are willing to do that work at no cost, but it has to be on a weekend, so the timing's really tricky. If they're not aware of some of these dates already, I might just ask you to follow up because they have a little bit more complexity, and they're trying to avoid costs, so it may be that for them, in order to meet October 1, they may have to go a couple of weekends early.
Yeah, and well, with the Maritime Center specifically, I have communicated with them, or we're actually going to, their programs run through much of October. So, we're actually, we've talked to the contractors at meetings before the bids were submitted and let them know that, you know, that program would like to try to continue to operate, so we're working to try to allow them to continue to operate their program and let dredging begin at the same time, and making sure it's safe.
I know that there are a lot of details in all this, and I appreciate your diligence and really being mindful of all the many details on this.
Any questions from the audience on the special regulations relating to the removal of items from the inner harbor in connection with the dredging? So, as I indicated at the outset, we intend to vote this on September 10, which is the date of our next meeting. Okay? Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Now, we can return to our regularly scheduled program. So, we have been asked to review and revise improvements to the tunnel cap. Emily Wentworth is here, and I wondered if she might join us at the table and help us review the materials provided by Susan Murphy, counsel to the town, as well as Emily.
Hi, thank you.
Good evening.
And thank you for being here on your vacation.
Yes, barely. [laughing] Thank you for your patience. So, there were some improvements that the Board of Selectmen approved in connection with the Lincoln Building.
Excuse me, Emily, do you want our packet here?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I also forgot my keys to my office.
But you're here. That's the important thing.
Again, barely. There have been some very minor modifications in connection with the improvements that the Board of Selectmen approved. Specifically, those involve changes to the placement and number of light posts that the Board of Selectmen approved in connection with the Lincoln Building. There were originally four lamp posts supposed to be placed behind the Lincoln Building. There instead have been two placed behind the building, and instead of the additional two, there have been three wall sconces placed on the back of the building that the Historical Commission approved. So, I think there is sufficient lighting back there, even though the number of light posts has changed. And there have also been very, very modest changes in the placement and size of the hardscape behind the Lincoln Building. It amounts to five square feet, so there's an additional five square feet of brick behind the Lincoln Building instead of landscaping that was there previously. And so, that's the amount of the changes. It would require that the Selectmen approve them because it's different than what you had previously approved, and I understand that the developer and his attorney is here would like to...
Do you wish to make any sort of a statement?
Somebody was saying they had a mistake.
Okay.
If you're running a boat, you want to see the floor.
Yes, sure.
Excuse me. The dark are the new light, the dark ones...
So, it's this, right?
Yeah, that kind of little bit, and it was two feet some other place.
Like this?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay.
Other than that, and then two lamps are, if I put glasses on, I could see the...
Yeah, here, here, yeah.
The dark ones here and here, the light ones are not there.
Okay. Did you see that? Thank you. So, this stuff is new, and then these lamps didn't get dropped in. Okay. Do you want this for the record? Joe?
Emily, was this work being done pursuant to any relief from the zoning board?
Not relief directly. It is in connection with a special permit that was issued by the zoning board, as well as a site plan approval and special permit A3 issued by the planning board, although technically off-site from the permit. So, those permits are attached to 5155 South Street. This work specifically is more directly under the purview of the Board of Selectmen because it's over the tunnel cap.
But is there anything in the zoning board or planning board actions that would be inconsistent with the plans that were being shown?
No, nothing inconsistent. The planning board specifically imposed a condition that the lighting and tunnel cap improvements are, that they would be subject to this board's approval, as well as the Historical Commission. Again, the Historical Commission has previously approved the lighting plan for, as modified on the ground.
And with respect to the building department, has the building commissioner reviewed the plans, and has he satisfied with them?
Yes, he's waiting for the zoning board to sign off on the final occupancy permits, and we're waiting for this board's approval until we sign off because there's a section of the zoning bylaw that says for multifamily development that all improvements be done in accordance with the plan, and until they're done, we don't sign off on more than 80 percent of the occupancy permits.
Right. I just want to make sure that our vote here is not inconsistent with the authority of the zoning board, planning board, or the building commissioner to conduct their review.
No, not inconsistent, although we would wait for your approval before we sign off on final COs.
Okay. And I also understand that there is a request to release the security deposit?
That's correct, yep. So, if you were to approve the modifications as made on the ground, then we would deem the improvements complete, and that would be okay.
So, the security deposit, let me ask, what was the purpose of the security deposit? To ensure performance and that the work conformed with the plans?
Yes, to our standards and to the plans.
So, but for the issue that we are voting on, there's no other issue that would require application of the security deposit to cure?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
God, don't you love having Joe? Thank you for, and thanks to Attorney Murphy. I read through all this and actually was in the square earlier today and kind of took the time to walk around a little bit. I wasn't like looking at my papers and looking at the picture, but looking around, and Mr. Falconeri, you did a wonderful job on the project. You know, you've come before this board several times. We've had to close sidewalks, and, you know, you've listened to our concerns about the merchants, when, you know, you've been responsive to issues, and speaking personally, the only comments I've heard about the Lincoln Building is how beautifully it's come out, and I, it's hard to remember that it wasn't there. And so, thank you, you know, thank you for your work on it. I'm satisfied with the request that's in front of us tonight, and I know you want to get a CO so that you can start getting the building occupied, and I think we'd like to see that, too. And Emily, thank you for your work on this as well.
So, Emily, just again, a question about the mechanics of the release of the security deposit. So, we vote tonight, and then is it the building inspector that ultimately releases it? Like, you have to wait for the zoning board to vote? Like, when does, it's just our vote?
It's more administrative.
Okay.
So, we'll be working with the town accountant and the building commissioner on the occupancy permits to make sure that everything's buttoned up.
Okay. And so, once that process is concluded, then the security deposit gets released? Okay. I, you know, first of all, I echo Mary's comments. It really is just a spectacular building, and I think everybody in the square is anxious to get both people living upstairs and also retail tenants. And I know that you're not the owner of the building, but I've had, heard some concerns just about the rents relative to the retail rents in the square, and, you know, we, as a board, are just concerned with the vitality of the square, and so to have this beautiful building and to not, you know, to not get tenants in there, particularly, you know, I think the unique nature of the square of having kind of the one-off community tenant, you know, provides a different dimension to the retail aspect of the square. So, you know, obviously, that's not within our purview, but I think I have definitely heard the concerns of the merchant base down there, that, you know, to Mary's point, there was a hole for a long time, and then this process took a while, and I think that the whole fabric, the retail fabric of that, of the square is sort of anxious to see some activity in that building. So, hopefully, this is a step in that direction. And then, I guess, you know, I had a question maybe for you, Joe, which is, it struck me that we were actually amending the license agreement, but maybe the vote language sort of accomplishes what we need to do? Do you think?
Yeah, I think the vote accomplishes what we need to do.
Okay. Anybody, any questions for the public with respect to the sign off on the tunnel cap improvements?
And I noticed, Emily, your children are here. This is their chance to ask their mom questions. So, if you've got any questions that you want to ask.
Like, maybe a little extra ice cream? Next generation of bureaucrats.
Exactly.
But since my colleague made note of our audience members, I want to let you both know that your mother is a really important part of our team, and she does a wonderful job and works very hard, and we're very lucky that she works here.
Absolutely. She's a rock star.
Yes.
So, we, I know it probably wasn't at the top of your list to come here tonight and watch her in action, but we rely on her advice for a lot of important projects in this town, and like Mary said, she's a vital member of our team. So, thanks for sharing her with us. All right, I think I would take this motion.
I move that the board approve the changes made to the tunnel cap modification that was constructed by RSL pursuant to the license, maintenance, and indemnification agreement dated December 19, 2017, and that we accept the tunnel cap modifications as-built and authorize the release to RSL of the security deposit in the amount of $30,000 held by the town pursuant to Section 4.2 of said license.
Second, can I ask one other technical question? Accept the tunnel cap modifications as-built, should we reference that plan, Joe, or you just, you don't think it's material?
Well, let me ask, is this plan consistent with the as-built plan that's been submitted with the town?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then...
No, okay.
Because it's as-built, as confirmed by, the as-built plan has submitted to the town, so we're fine.
Okay. So, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Thank you, you're a hero.
Yes, thanks, I'm looking...
Ice cream.
Ice cream.
[laughing] There's a great place in the square. Thanks for being here. Okay, so I think we're at...
Chair, you can say.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Rydel. I also have a tunnel cap issue that I hope is going to be on the agenda, and I've tried to find out about it. It's about the proposed pergola on Founders Park. I've had the...
You know, can I ask you to, well, a couple of things. Can I ask you to come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Oh, okay.
And, but I'm pretty quickly going to say that we're not going to entertain this because the tunnel cap, it was the review of this particular contract, so that's why I was kind of, why don't you come to the podium, and we'll have a little chat.
All right.
So, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Shirley Rydel, and I've been working with the Downtown Business Association on several projects. This being one of them is the placement of a pergola for the purpose of providing shade for shoppers to where they can take their ice cream cones and things. They seem to need, they said they're desperate for shade downtown. They have a lot of benches put on them in the shade. So, I've been working on this proposal, and I need to have the approval of the Selectmen to place something on tunnel property, which Founders Park on the tunnel cap is.
Right.
And so, I've been working this through for almost a year, I think. I have a copy of part of it.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you now...
Okay.
...procedurally, because, so, you know, our agendas are governed by the open meeting law, right? And so, under the open meeting law, we have to tell everybody in town what we're going to talk about and essentially when we're going to talk about it. And because this isn't properly posted, we really can't have this conversation until we put it on an agenda, and it might be properly posted. So, I'm going to ask that maybe you provide the materials that you brought with you to our assistant town administrator, and we're going to have to take this conversation offline because we can't have this discussion because it's not on the agenda. And so, to be honest with you, that's why I was looking at you at the beginning of the meeting, because that would have been the time to make...
Well, I saw this tunnel cap, made them on here, and I thought it was me. I tried to get ahold of Andrea, and I couldn't get anyone to verify it. We tried to get it on last month, and...
Right, this is a, this was a very specific...
Yeah, I understand that now, but I didn't...
Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you. I just, and I am not in a position to be able to allow it to move forward because it would be a violation of the open meeting law.
Okay.
So, maybe if you could provide that information to Michelle, we can regroup on this.
Okay, I'll be glad to do that.
And please don't...
I'll make an appointment with you.
Sure, you can just email it to me here.
And don't take this as a comment on whether we think this is important or significant. It's we need to make sure that others who also are concerned have an opportunity to be heard, so...
No, that'll be fine. I just want to place on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we have, do we have any appointments? No appointments?
So, we have one.
Oh, okay.
So, can I...
Would you like to make an appointment?
Sure. So, I just want to, just as context for the public, so the town meeting authorized the creation of a water transition and evaluation committee where the moderator has three appointments, the Board of Selectmen have two appointments. In my capacity as the liaison and at the direction of the town administrator, I reached out to the moderator to ask, hey, what sort of a process should we follow for determining a chair? And it was the moderator's suggestion, which made a lot of sense to me, that we follow the same process we used for the school building committee that was jointly appointed two years ago, and that was that it was a recommendation of all of the appointing bodies as to a chair. I let Mr. Puozzo know that we were hoping to take this up tonight so that that committee could begin its work. Now that we've engaged environmental partners, we're ready to go with them. So, I think Mr. Puozzo sent a note to me, which I believe Michelle or Tom forwarded I believe Michelle or Tom forwarded to the both of you, just kind of confirming our conversation and saying that, and in that, in the course of that, I let him know who we appointed. I let him know that we appointed Mr. Seer and Mr. Taylor. And Mr. Puozzo wrote back and said that he would be pleased with the appointment of Mr. Jim Taylor as the chair of the committee. I would concur with that. We have a strong committee. And I think Mr. Taylor's experience with the advisory committee will be very helpful, especially because I think there will be a lot of public interest in this committee.
Right.
So with that, I would make a motion to appoint James Taylor as the chair of the Water Transition and Evaluation Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And this, just to note, for the record, this is not James Taylor, the same.
No guitars.
No guitars.
Okay.
Okay. We have a number of votes. First two are off. So the, we're being asked to vote tonight on the comprehensive athletic field and outdoor court study. Michelle, do you want to maybe say a couple of words about it?
Sure. So Recreation Director Mark Thorell couldn't be here tonight. He's out of town with his family. But I do see another member of the field study working group in the audience, Ray Estes, tonight. So this is a CPC project that was funded with an appropriation from the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. And we issued an RFP. The, the working group consists of Mark Thorell, me, Ray Estes, as well as representatives from the School Department, the South Shore Country Club, and DPW. So we issued an RFP in July. We received five responses to that RFP, decided to interview three of them. And the working group decided that Weston and Sampson put together the most advantageous proposal and was the best fit for the town. Weston and Sampson is prepared to move forward, excuse me, next week and start the project immediately. We've communicated to them that we would like to, to look at some preliminary findings and recommendations later this year in the December, or possibly late, early January timeframe, so that if appropriate, we could take some action and put something on the warrant in 2019, if that's recommended. They estimate that it will take four to six months to complete the comprehensive field study. And this is going to take a look at all of our athletic fields, as well as our outdoor tennis and basketball courts in town, do an inventory, talk to all of the user groups to sort of assess the field needs, the program needs, and make sure we're able to meet current and future demands.
Great. Thank you. Ray, any, any comments at this point, or?
Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, here on behalf of the Hingham Sports Partnership. I'd just like to commend Michelle. It was a great process. I think the, the choice was the right choice. And I'm looking forward to getting started. We're talking about setting a date for a kickoff meeting next week, which is exciting.
Great.
And I know that there's a lot of folks in town who are really interested in this. And I appreciate the board's support in this endeavor.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, any questions? I, I understand that you took the fine-tooth comb to the...
I did. And this, this contract, I think, is appropriate for the town. I note that it is a total lump sum of $56,000. And I think there are the appropriate provisions in the contract for handling the payment and review. So I commend you and, and the group, really, for getting this going. Thank you.
Well, and I know that you spent a, a great deal of time with certain of our other contracts. And I think that that, that, that review has then begun to inform our contracts going forward, which is always nice.
That is your nice way of saying I've been the bad guy.
No, no. It's important to read what you sign, I feel like.
Yes, exactly.
Mary?
Michelle, I, I had one question. I, I think you alluded to it. But as I was reading through the contract, the request for proposal, the responses, I saw, and I was trying to put my hands on it in this document, I saw that, I believe it was Weston and Sampson said that this would be a 14-week process. I think, I saw a reference to 14 weeks. And then I saw a reference to February 28th of 2020. And I was kind of looking at both of those and, and just trying to understand the timing, particularly understanding that, that warrant articles are due on January 20th. And just, you know, how, how might some of that sync up?
In speaking with them, so when they presented, they estimated that it takes four to six months to do a study like this and really do it correctly. But with being able to start next week, basically, that four-week, that four-month period may, might as well be totally wrapped up in late December, early January. The reason why we put with them in the contract the very last day of February, is they see that as sort of the very end of what they would need in terms of the delivery of the final report. They have no problems with making initial recommendations and findings to meet our timeline in terms of being able to, to put something together for town meeting.
And then, I'm just kind of procedurally, so let's say that there are some findings. How, where will they enter into the public process? Will, will they come here? Will it go to CPC since they, well, CPC is funding it, but I don't, I don't think they would go back to them.
They'll likely come from the field study working group. But I know that the Recreation Commission was the proponent for the CPC article. So I assume they would be involved as well. But then, they would come to the board for consideration for the warrant as well.
Okay. Thank you. My, my sort of general understanding of this was that we were all trying to get on the same page. So we're trying to get all the stakeholders in the room and agree to some priorities and some field resting programs and some maintenance practices that, you know, across sort of stewardship groups. So we steward some of the fields, the schools steward some of the fields. And instead of doing all of our own things, the success that other communities have had to, to protect and develop these capital assets for their individual towns, that, that success has been brought about by cooperating. And so, to your point, I think, I think some of it's going to be having that working group coalesce around certain priorities that then maybe get advanced through the individual stewardship groups. But, you know, we haven't done anything like this before. But I, I, you know, I think, I think, I think, you know, number one, these are important capital assets for the town that a number of people count on to use. And, you know, number two, there's potentially, you know, significant dollars at stake in, in, in improving some of those facilities. And so, to get on the same page and to sort of march along according to the same priorities, just, you know, intuitively makes a lot of sense to me.
You know, this is one of those places where having some objective data, you know, people can have different opinions. But if you have, if you have the common data, I think if you're, if you're in the midst of sports programs in the town, it feels like there are never enough facilities. If you're involved in budgeting, you feel like sometimes there isn't enough put into maintenance.
Yeah.
And if you're kind of not in it, you can sort of drive around and go, wow, we seem to have a lot of stuff around here. And I think having an outside group with, an outside independent group, take a look and benchmark us against other communities, I think is going to, it's going to create some opportunities in lots of different ways. So, excited to see what comes out. This is kind of the year of a lot of master planning.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's good. I think it's good. And I just, you know, Ray is here on behalf of the Hingham Sports Partnership. I, I talked with Bill Crean this week as well. And, you know, I think one of the essential functions that the Hingham Sports Partnership is providing is to be able to gather and have ready access to the various stakeholder groups. Because I, I think, just like the master planning process, if, if people don't feel like their concerns are heard, then, then the outcomes become suspect. So I think the process piece of this is just as important as, you know, the end result. And I think the Hingham Sports Partnership has really helped to facilitate and will help to facilitate the consultants' access to those groups. And I think that's going to be the key to trying to stay, you know, on schedule. And in addition to that, you know, I think we're providing for this. But, you know, I'd like to see sort of one general public session where people can come and be able to just voice their opinions regardless of what kind of user group they're attached to. But, you know, again, I, I think the working group's done a fantastic job in pulling this together in, in relatively short order. I think it is, I think it's going to be important to see if we have, if we have some initial findings that we can begin to act on potentially for the upcoming town meeting. And again, you know, I applaud the efforts of Ray and your colleagues on the Sports Partnership to, to facilitate this project with the many user groups in town. So, you know, I, again, I think that this, this planning and sort of thoughtful stewardship of, of the assets and, of our assets, and then, you know, being able to make thoughtful decisions about how we deploy capital is, you know, kind of an essential part of how we do business. So I'm looking forward to it.
I just note one further item, that the town meeting appropriated $60,000. And we're coming in at $56,000. So thank you for coming in under budget.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., to conduct a comprehensive athletic field and outdoor court study, field study, not to exceed $56,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
And then we've got a couple of preliminary CPC applications. Michelle, are you able to speak to those?
Sure. So the first one is for the Canterbury Street Cemetery. Council Murphy will be coming back to the board to do the official taking in a few weeks. But because the CPC preliminary deadline is tomorrow, we want to be able to submit a placeholder if the board agrees. So this would be, it's estimated for $40,000, working with DPW as well as a preservation specialist, to be able to restore the Canterbury Street Cemetery to its proper state. So this would, the preservation specialist would be on-site as DPW crews sort of clean up the area, create a new entranceway to it. And then the preservation specialist would also be repairing some of the worst or the most damaged headstones there. Going forward, this is sort of the initial request to, to bring the cemetery back into a decent state. Going forward, there would likely be additional CPC requests in future years to repair the remaining headstones. And then, an estimate of between $900 and $1,000 in an annual maintenance budget, not through CPC, but either in the DPW budget or the Historical Commission budget, to be able to, twice a year, in the spring and fall, sort of clean and maintain the area, cut back the growth, and things like that.
Okay. Joe, any questions?
No. I just note that this is consistent with the 2019 town meeting, which authorized the board of selectmen to acquire the Canterbury Street Cemetery. And I'm glad we're moving forward with this aspect of that project.
The most discussed article on that night of town.
Yes, it was.
Mary?
Yeah, I would, I just want to kind of, you know, the, the process in this, and the reason this is coming before us, is that these are on town land. And I guess the way I look at these, when they come to us in August, is that this, this, to me, is a procedural vote for this project to be one of many considered for CPC.
Right.
I think, you know, right now, and that, that's kind of why I'm voting. There have been times when I think this board, or I voted not to advance something because I, I knew I wouldn't necessarily support it through the cycle. But I, I think this, this has a long way to go. And I, I think, I just want to make sure that our votes tonight are viewed as procedural and not necessarily endorsing a project, because, as we all know with CPC, it's limited funds. And so, it's, it's really helpful to see all the projects in, in totality. But I'm, I'm glad to see this is going forward because, because of the vote of town meeting. I, I view it as town meeting, you know, wanting to have this choice. So our vote tonight will make that possible.
Thanks for that. That, that's an important procedural clarification. Any further questions with respect to the preliminary CPC application for the Canterbury Street Cemetery? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Make a motion to submit a Preliminary Community Preservation Act project application to restore the Canterbury Street Cemetery.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the next one is the Tree and Park Barn on Eight Short Street. It's a, a, a building owned by the town?
It is. So this is a request to repaint the entire building, which was last done in 2013, and has been peeling recently. So the Historical Commission, Andrea, and our building maintenance supervisor, Jeff Peasey, have all taken a look at this, recommend this. They use the estimate from it being done seven years ago and have added some money to that to make sure that with costs increasing, we could cover it with the $35,000 that's requested this time. And it would just help protect and preserve the building.
And did CPC fund the painting last time?
I believe they did.
Okay. As a historical expenditure?
I believe so.
Because it's a...
Carol Costello pulled the procurement paperwork for it. So I can double check on that for you.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
But that's, I'm, I'm assuming that that would be the ask under the, under the historical bucket?
Yes.
Is that the, okay. Joe, questions?
Just as a homeowner, homeowner, if, if it was painted, if I painted my house in 2013, it needed to be repainted now, I would not be happy. So hopefully, someone is looking at...
We will likely go with a, a different vendor this time to make sure that it lasts longer.
It, it, it does look pretty, it needs painting.
Yes.
Yeah. Mary, no questions? Any questions for the public on the Tree and Park Building? Seeing none, would take a motion.
Motion to submit a Preliminary Community Preservation Act project application to repaint the former Tree and Park Barn at Eight Short Street.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. My favorite time of the evening, the one-day liquor license approvals. So I would accept, well, actually, we have an annual alt fall festival at Weir River Farm. Deputy Jones, do you have any, any comments on any of the liquor licenses tonight?
No, our only request with the size of the events, all three are repeats from previous years. Just with the size of the events and the amount of people, and they're all outdoor, we'd just request that the, the selectmen require a police detail on each one.
Detail? Okay. Is that part of the application? Or do we need to add that to the vote?
It's, it's not part of the application, no.
Has there been any discussion with the applicants about the police detail? And do you have an idea of whether they're willing to do that?
I did speak with Sharon, and they all did have police details last year, as far as her and I can track back.
Okay.
So we don't anticipate being an issue at all.
Thank you. But other than that, all the paperwork looks to be in order and...
Yeah, they all have their tip certification.
Tip certification, yep.
Are in order.
Okay.
Were there any incidents in any of these events last year that would give you cause for concern?
No, I did look. And I spoke to the detail officer, and there was not any, any concerns that came up during the event.
Great.
So typically, if there's like a parking plan, or, you know, something like that, that actually becomes part of the application. So I'm assuming we probably, we should probably reflect the requirement of a police detail in the vote, right?
There'd be, the department's only request, that, that'd be part of the vote to issue the one-day permit.
Okay. Okay. Joe, any questions on any one of the three of these, while the deputies at the podium?
Well, really, to your point, it says description of event and parking. So I'm looking to see for the first one, if in fact, there is a reference for parking to have a police detail. This is, I'm not seeing. For the, there's a Weir River Farm one.
Yeah.
I don't see anything for parking at all here.
It's attached to...
I know on that one before, they had used the entrance, not the one on 228 there, but the other entrance, and had parking up in the...
Up in the field?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah. It, it just looks like maybe that sheet didn't get attached. So I think we could approve it with a police detail and, and have Sharon to send us the parking plan.
Okay.
But I, my assumption would be the same as yours, consistent with yours, that they would park in that field.
Correct, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Mary, any questions on any of these?
No.
And then, I also am noting that there are no rain dates. We've run into situations before where we've had to come in at the last minute because of a, a rain situation. So these folks are clear that if it rains on this date and they don't hold the event, they don't have a liquor license for an alternate date.
I'll confirm with Sharon tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from my one person in the audience? Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Jeffrey Petter on behalf of Zealous Beer Company for the annual Fall Festival at Weir River Farm on Saturday, September 21, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., subject to the applicant... to the applicant retaining a police detail? Is that, is that the language you're looking for?
Yes, that's perfect.
To be onsite.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Robert Lacy on behalf of House of Prayer Lutheran Church for Oktoberfest, to be held at the House of Prayer Lutheran Church on Saturday, September 28, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Deputy, this is also subject?
Yes.
Subject, subject to the applicant retaining a police detail to be onsite.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. So, for the last one, I will just make a disclosure that I am a member of the Hingham Historical Society, but I don't think that would preclude me from-
Ditto. I am too.
So, then we, conflicts are not apparent here. So, I move the Board to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverage license to Deidre Anderson on behalf of Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Weekend, to be held at Old Ordinary on Saturday, September 14, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on Sunday, September 15, 2019, from 12:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., subject to the applicant obtaining a police detail for this event.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Great, thanks. Thanks for being here.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last, I would entertain a motion to waive the building permit fees associated with the High School Guidance Office project.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, announcements?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Joe?
Mary? Just a couple of things. I, I was actually in the high school last night for Fall Sports Night, and the Clarestory windows that town meeting approved have been installed, and they really, they really look nice. And I know that staff at the high school's also been working very hard to make sure that the building is, is ready to open. And the second, that second-floor wing that, that was affected by the fire that took place in the spring, all the repairs have been made, and so it's, it's ready, it's ready to go.
Excellent. So, I was at the new teacher welcome on Monday morning at the middle school. Dr. Austin did the honors for the first time, great energy welcoming 22 new professionals, I think 18 teachers and a couple of, a couple of paraprofessionals that will join the staff for the school department. It's, I think, a great day or so program, acclimating those folks to our community, and we, we welcome them and look forward to the start of school. Another sort of school-related announcement, I'd say is just be careful of folks in the crosswalk. I, I just, I think that we, we've all gotten sort of maybe a little bit complacent about the summertime traffic level being lower. You know, the, the deputies here, it's gonna take us longer to get around town, particularly in the morning. And I just think we need to exercise some care in keeping, keeping track of where the crosswalks are and anticipating some traffic in the crosswalks. I'm sometimes one of those people, so I'm just, maybe a little self-interest there. I'd like to also just let you know that the, the MSBA is planning to come to Hingham to tour Foster School in a couple of weeks, and there'll be a, a group representing both the Board, the schools, and the building committee to, to be part of that walking tour. I think it's really, really helpful that they're willing to come onsite and see, and see the facility once again in, in connection with our statement of interest for MSBA funding. And last but not least, you know, one of the issues that we've heard you on and that we will follow up on is, is the summer ferry service during the weekends. You know, I, I don't know if folks out there have experienced it. I've certainly experienced it where you show up for the ferry on the weekend and you can't get onboard. There's gotta be a better way to make sure that people can plan accordingly. You know, I think it's fantastic that people are taking mass transportation into the city, and we need to make that both reliable and accessible. So, we'll be working with our, our neighboring communities, as well as our state delegation, I think, to address the concerns with respect to the ferry. And I think that's-
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I forgot, and we, we just approved a, a license, but I did just wanna mention, because the Historical Society Tavern Weekend was something that was tried for the first time last year. Big tent outside Old Ordinary, you know, 300 people, a wonderful event. And this year, to build on that, the Historical Society is not only having the tavern night, but then the next day a brunch, just trying to reach out to people. And tickets have gone on sale in the last couple days. And I would just encourage people who are interested, get your tickets quickly, because it was a wonderful event last year. It helps support things. There was a mass cultural grant provided to the town, or provided to the Historical Society for Old Ordinary. So, this is, you know, the, this is not only a way to celebrate and enjoy our historic places, but it's, it's also a way to provide necessary funding for the very hard-working people who take care of these buildings for us. So, that's taking place on September 14, Saturday night, and then on September 15, Sunday. So, get your tickets.
Awesome. All right.
Great.
Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.